Forward to the cloud. Okay, for those, let me just say this here. For those of you who are just joining us via the recording, we've already prayed and I started talking until Matt reminded me I wasn't recording. Surprise. So we're going to go ahead and start just over again. We're going to just briefly recap what we talked about last week. Then we're going to get into Job's three friends whom he calls miserable comforters. Okay, so Job had a pretty big complaint last week. Let's just kind of refresh our memories. Who can tell me something about Job's complaint against God? What did he have to say to us last week?
Nothing is fair.
Nothing is fair. Okay, that's a good start.
Why did you even let me be born?
Ah, why bother letting me live? Excellent. So nothing is fair. Why am I even alive? What are we going to add to this mix here?
Wipe out the very day.
Yeah, he wanted to sort of extinguish the very day of his existence. What else did he say?
I don't think he said it last week, but there's a very strong theme of his not being able to communicate with God.
Yes, that is something we didn't get a chance to address last week, but you're right, that does run throughout Job's passages. He complains a lot about God not really being available to him. He could air his case. Is there anything else that sticks out about Job's complaint that we want to talk about? Just to make sure we've got the table set.
We talked about Job having essentially traumatic stress.
We did. We talked about trauma quite a bit last week and Job is definitely checking off a lot of the boxes that we would look at in a psychological assessment of somebody who has gone through a traumatic experience. So he's dealing with a lot. Does Job want to be alive? No, he definitely came up a little bit of a suicide vibe.
But he's not at the point where he's willing to curse God and
And he continues. So I didn't catch that. Right, he's not quite ready to curse God and lie down. He still feels like he has some things he wants to say. Now, Job opens up with his speech in chapter three, which I, which we read in its entirety last week. Now, what I'm going to do this week is I'm going to kind of introduce bits and pieces of what the three friends have to say, but we're definitely going to take a look at each of their first three utterances in their entirety, which is going to get a little long for Eliphaz or however you want to pronounce that name. But we'll get into that in just a bit. Before we do, I want to introduce a concept here that you've probably heard of before, but it's worth keeping in mind as we talk about what Job's three friends have to say. How many of you have heard the term retributive justice before? Retributive justice? Some heads going yes, some heads going like
Retribution.
I think I have.
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Okay, so what do you think it means?
It's the justice that's carried out in the form of retribution.
Yes, very much. No, you're correct. So if it's a form of justice where retribution is paid back, what else, when you hear that phrase, what else springs to mind? I can see the gears
After the fact.
After the fact, so after something bad has happened, justice is paid. So sort of post hoc. Becca, it looks like the gears are turning.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm getting stuck on the whole retribution thing and is that really justice? I don't know. So yeah.
That's what we're going to question.
Yeah.
So the idea here with retributive justice is that we're assuming if that's the way we think the world works, that God will pay back virtue with good. So if you are a good person, you get good rewards and good things happen to you. And if you're a bad person, bad things will happen to you. So again, if you're good, good, you can expect good things to happen. And if you're bad, bad things will happen.
This is an interesting trial because God is the judge as well as being accused.
Yeah, and we're, and we're going to continue to unpack that as we get deeper into this. But when we're looking at this concept here, this is important because a lot of passages in the Old Testament in particular are going to assume that this is the way the universe works. The, for example, pretty much the entirety of the book of Proverbs observes or assumes some form of retribution based justice system when it comes to bad things happening to bad people and good things happening to good people. Again, if you want to know the Lord, keep your path straight and he will bless you, that kind of stuff.
That's like that whole prosperity theology and stuff like, you know.
It does have a prosperity gospel vibe connected.
That's what I was gonna say.
Yeah, and it's important because this is very much the assumption that Job's three friends are going to have about the way that the world works. And before his troubles, you could probably argue that this is what Job believed as well. Now, we heard from Job last week. Do you think he believes in retributive justice anymore? I see Bruce like going, no. And you're clear. He's really having a hard time with it. So what we're going to do is introduce Eliphaz first. He's the first of Job's three friends that's going to have anything to say. And he's a little, um, he's a little long-winded when he opens things up because he gets, because he's special, he gets two chapters for his opening statement. And he says quite a lot in those two chapters. Because this is a very big chunk of text, what I'm going to do is I'm going to read it. And I just want you guys to listen to what he has to say and think about a couple of questions as you're listening to Eliphaz is talking about. Think about, first of all, what is he saying about Job? Second of all, I want you to think about what he's saying about God. And third, what is he saying about justice? So we want to pay attention to what he says about Job, God, and justice as we're going through this. Okay, like crack my knuckles and then I'm going to put my reading glasses on. Chapter, I'm going to just tackle chapter four and chapter five. I'm just going to mow right through them just to help keep us on time. But the entire passage is really interesting. So listen carefully. Then Eliphaz the Temanite answered and said, "If one ventures a word with you, will you be impatient? Yet who can keep from speaking? Behold, you have instructed many and you have strengthened the weak hands. Your words have upheld him who is stumbling and you have made firm the feeble knees. But now it has come to you and you are impatient. It touches you and you are dismayed. Is not your fear of God your confidence? And the integrity of your ways, your hope? Remember, who that was innocent ever perished? Or were there ever, or where were the upright cut off? As I have seen, those who plow iniquity and so trouble will reap the same. By the breath of God they perish and by the blast of his anger they are consumed. The roar of the lion, the voice of the fierce lion, the teeth of the young lions are broken. The strong lion perishes for lack of prey and the cubs of the lioness are scattered. Now a word was brought to me stealthily. My ear received the whisper of it amid thoughts from visions of the night when deep sleep falls on men. Dread came upon me and trembling, which made all my bones shake. A spirit glided past my face. The hair of my flesh stood up. It stood still, but I could not discern its appearance. A form was before my eyes. There was silence. Then I heard a voice. Can mortal man be in the right before God? Can a man be pure before his maker? Even in his servants he puts no trust and his angels he charges with error. How much more those who dwell in houses of clay, whose foundation is in the dust, who are crushed like the moth? Between morning and evening, they are beaten to pieces. They perish forever without anyone regarding it. Is not their tent cord plucked up within them? Do they not die and that without wisdom? Call now. Is there anyone who will answer you? To which of the holy ones will you turn? Surely vexation kills the fool and jealousy slays the simple. I have seen the fool taking root, but suddenly I cursed his dwelling. His children are far from safety. They are crushed in the gate and there is no one to deliver them. The hungry eat his harvest and he takes it even out of thorns and the thirsty pant after his wealth. For affliction does not come from the dust, nor does trouble sprout up from the ground. But man is born to trouble as the sparks fly upward. As for me, I would seek God and to God would I commit my cause. Who does great things and unsearchable marvelous things without number? He gives rain on the earth and sends water on the fields. He sets on high those who are lowly and those who mourn are lifted to safety. He frustrates the devices of the crafty so that their hands achieve no success. He catches the wise in their own craftiness and the schemes of the wily are brought to a quick end. They meet with darkness in the daytime and grope at noonday as in the night. But he saves the needy from the sword of their mouth and from the hand of the mighty. So the poor have hope and injustice shuts her mouth. Behold, blessed is the one whom God reproves. Therefore despise not the discipline of the Almighty, for he wounds, but he binds up. He shatters, but his hands heal. He will deliver you from six troubles. In seven, no evil shall touch you. In famine, he will redeem you from death and in war from the power of the sword. You shall be hidden from the lash of the tongue and shall not fear destruction when it comes. At destruction and famine you shall laugh and shall not fear the beasts of the earth, for you shall be in league with the stones of the field and the beasts of the field shall be at peace with you. You shall know that your tent is at peace and you shall inspect your fold and miss nothing. You shall know also that your offspring shall be many and your descendants as the grass of the earth. You shall come to your grave in ripe old age, like a sheaf gathered up in its season. Behold, this we have searched out. It is true. Hear and know it for your good. Take a second and let those words wash over you. Let's just pause for 30 seconds as the rich poetry of the book sort of passes by and think about what sticks out to us about this passage. Okay, that's been about 30 seconds. Let's revisit those three questions, starting out with, first of all, what does Eliphaz here saying about Job? What do you notice? I know this is a big block of text. I completely get it. If your eye's glazed over, that's totally fine. But take a look, what does he have to say about Job himself?
Must have sinned.
There may be some kind of sin that Job has committed here. Okay.
But Job was basically a good person. He had helped other people and
Yeah. So this is an important feature of Eliphaz. And it's something that I had a lot of questions about. Are there any meaningful differences between Eliphaz, Bildad, and Zophar, who are the three friends? Because every time I've ever read this book, it feels like they all sort of run together. But there are differences and this is one of the key ones. Eliphaz actually has a lot of positive things to say about Job himself. What else sticks out to you? Go ahead, Matt.
Oh, go ahead.
Well, on the one hand, he does seem to accuse, you know, Job that you must have done something kind of thing. But at the same time, he talks about, you know, that God sets high the lowly. So it's almost, you know, I think he's not going to, well, it's almost like he's saying, well, you must have done something, I guess, because you know, that's what God does. He brings people down. But then God also lifts the lowly up. So it's almost like, you know, maybe God will bring you back. That's kind of the sense I got.
Yes.
What I was going for was verse 17 when he says, "Do not despise the discipline of the Almighty." Basically, you gotta just take this, you know, this is what God does to those he loves actually too, you know? And then he brings them back up.
Very good. Very good.
Verse 17, he says, "Can a mortal be innocent before God? Can anyone be pure before the Creator?" So he's kind of saying that we all have sinned and fall short.
Right, yes.
I think all of Job's friends have developed a fairly thorough theology of what they believe about God. They aren't just sort of haphazard in, in, oh gee, God, who's he? And I think that's one of the reasons that they have become friends with Job is that they have this common interest.
Good point, yes. And on that note, John, let's shift to that second question. What does Eliphaz have to say about God? And we touched on it a little bit, but let's circle back and really concentrate on that, like John was saying, the developed theology that this guy has of who God is and what God has to say.
Strikes me that he is definitely rooted in, I don't, I can't pronounce it, retributive justice?
Good enough.
All right, you know what I mean, but it seems like his, he assigns to God, he punishes the evil and blesses the good. Period. In fact, that seems to be his only interest.
In a lot of ways, yeah, he's very focused on this idea that there's sort of this balance to the scales, that the good are going to get good things, the bad are going to get bad things. True. What else is he saying about God here?
God's in control and you must have done something wrong if you're, this is happening to you. Repent and you will be blessed.
Right. Now, how much does he focus on the idea that Job has done something wrong in comparison with the promise of blessings?
Yeah, this section doesn't have that much about Job being wrong.
Correct. Like he mentions it, but it's, Eliphaz really seems to put a lot of weight on God restoring you if you will turn and do the right thing. When you look at this, and again, so each of the three friends have three utterances except for Zophar. Zophar only gets two, but we'll talk about that when we get to it. Eliphaz is by far out of the three, the most positive. By a long shot. He consistently has this idea that Job is on the whole a righteous person and that God is good. And because Job is righteous, he probably did something. But whatever it is, Job can turn back to God and Job's going to be more than okay in the long run. I mean, like, if you take a look at what he says, like in the, at the end of chapter five, where it talks, starting at verse 19, about how God is going to deliver you from six troubles. In seven, no evil shall touch you. He goes through all of these kinds of problems that Job's going to get to just kind of be immune to and bypass. But then I love how he gets to like verse 26 where he says, "You shall come to your grave in ripe old age," which is exactly what happens at the end of the book anyway, when Job dies at a ripe old age. And then in 27, he's like, yeah, God is going to take care of you. You're gonna be fine. We just need to find out what you did and just repent of it, but you're gonna be fine. Everything's gonna be cool, man. You're gonna be great. Eliphaz is really optimistic and very, very positive, especially when you compare him to the other two dudes who are talking to Job. What does he have to say about justice then? And we touched on it a bit, but let's get it back on the table, just so we've got it clear.
Isn't that kind of the old Jewish tradition that the good will be blessed and the bad are punished and
Yes. He's very much like Bruce was saying, and Artith has pointed out again here. He's way into the retributive justice and the things. I would call him retribution light. He definitely seems to have sort of a, yeah, I mean, yes, you did something wrong. And that's why this bad stuff's up. But it's gonna be great, man. It's gonna be so good. Just turn back to God and everything's gonna be fine.
Yeah, I mean, because he strikes, but his hands heal. Yeah, I mean, as long as you repent, it's gonna be good. It's like he'll forgive you and life will be great again. Yeah.
So he's, he's very positive. So he's kind of like, you know, the kind of, if you want to compare him to some modern characters in the church, he can be a lot like that Christian who really believes optimistically that if people kind of get connected with Jesus, that their life is just going to get better. Right? And there's not, everything is going to be fine in the long run.
But aren't, aren't those also the people that like, say there was a purpose for everything? It can go that route too, where, you know, God has it all under control when your entire family just died last week or something. I mean, you know, and so there is that like, yes, it's true, but is this the right place and time to have this conversation?
Yeah. Let's do, let's do a little empathy exercise here. I want you to imagine, you don't, please don't, don't feel like you have to share it with the group. That's not the point of the exercise. But I want you to just imagine for a second, a moment where you have experienced a really, really big loss. Maybe someone you have deeply loved died or something awful has happened to you. And then I want you to imagine that you meet Zophar. You come and, not Zophar, sorry, Eliphaz, I was looking at the wrong name. And he comes up to you and he just tries to be really upbeat and he tells you, yeah, you probably did something wrong, but don't worry, man, it's all gonna be fine. Would you want to hear that message?
No.
No.
Not just then.
No, not, okay, let, right, Rosalie, not just then. I love that you said that. Not just then. Is Eliphaz right about some stuff?
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah, right. I think he is. I think that there's stuff in here that he gets right. And I definitely agree that God is healing and God is good. But it's, this may be the sort of the wrong note played at the wrong time. So now we've met the first of the three. You ready to meet the other two? Let's talk about Bildad. Bildad's super neat. He hits an entire chapter to himself. And again, it's a longer block of text. Do I have a volunteer who'd be willing to read all of chapter eight out loud for us?
I can.
You can, Becca? Okay. Now, before we do that, remember the three questions. What's he saying about Job? What's he saying about God? What's he saying about justice? And then again, just, I love that we get to read these whole big chapters. These are the only three chapters that we're going to read that are really big. But just really enjoy the poetry because it is actually super good when it's read out loud. Go ahead, Becca.
And Bildad the Shoehite answered, "How long will you say these things and the words of your mouth be a great wind? Does God pervert justice or does the Almighty pervert the right? If your children sinned against him, he delivered them into the power of their transgression. If you will seek God and make supplication to the Almighty, if you are pure and upright, surely then he will rouse himself for you and restore to you your rightful place. Though your beginning was small, your latter days will be very great. For inquire now of bygone generations and consider what their ancestors have found. For we are but of yesterday and we know nothing, for our days on earth are but a shadow. Will they not teach you and tell you and utter words out of their understanding? Can papyrus grow where there is no marsh? Can reeds flourish where there is no water? While yet in flower and not cut down, they wither before any other plant. Such are the paths of all who forget God. The hope of the godless shall perish. Their confidence is gossamer, a spider's house their trust. If one leans against its house, it will not stand. If one lays hold of it, it will not endure. The wicked thrive before the sun and their shoots spread over the garden. Their roots twine around the stone heap. They live among the rocks. If they are destroyed from their place, then it will deny them, saying, "I have never seen you." See, these are their happy ways and out of the earth still others will spring. See, God will not reject a blameless person, nor take the hand of evil doers. He will yet fill your mouth with laughter and your lips with shouts of joy. Those who hate you will be clothed with shame and the tent of the wicked will be no more.
He has a little bit of a different tone from Eliphaz, doesn't he?
But he tends to touch on the same issues. He just does it with a little more emphasis.
Yes, he does, very much. Now, so Eliphaz got kind of lucky because he starts out with a two-chapter monologue. Bildad is kind of funny because I feel like his chapters are kind of quick and then his very last speech is just sort of like, cut super short on the basis of the way that things got organized. So you have to kind of jump around a little bit in some of his other utterances to get a cleaner sense of what he thinks. So what we're going to do real quick is we're going to just jump over to one of his other little speeches here. And it's in Job, chapter 18, one through four. Let's just take a quick peek at that. Again, because I want to give you a sense of the person here. Who can get that for us? Chapter 18, one through four.
I got it.
Go ahead.
Then Bildad the Shoehite answered, "How long will you hunt for words? Consider, and then we shall speak. Why are we counted as cattle? Why are we stupid in your sight? You who tear yourself into your anger, shall the earth be forsaken because of you or the rock be removed out of its place?"
Good. And then one more for Bildad. And this is actually probably my favorite out of all of Bildad's speeches because rhetorically speaking, it's kind of a home run. This is in chapter 25, the shortest chapter in all of Job. And it's verses two through six. Who would like to get this? And again, this is a fun one. Who would like to read this for us? Twenty-five, two through six.
Can his forces be numbered? Upon whom does his light not rise? How then can a man be righteous before God? How can one born of woman be pure? Even if even the moon is not bright and the stars are not pure in his eyes, how much less man who is but a maggot, a son of man who is only a worm?
Got it. That gives you a little bit of the flavor of Bildad. And when we were, when we just looked at the opener for chapter 18, like, that's like the most, verses one through four is the most Bildad directs at Job. And then the rest of the time, he just like laments wickedness the whole chapter and it's a little repetitive. Now that we've got a bit of a better sense of who he is, let's return to the three questions. What did he have to say about Job? He doesn't seem to say a lot.
He doesn't. I mean, he's basically like, kind of, how long are you gonna complain?
Yeah. Exactly. Exactly. He's just kind of like, man, you whine a lot, Job. Oh, my gosh, dude.
He does say that if his children sin against him, he delivered them into the power of their transgression. So he basically blamed his children, children's death on something they did.
Yes. That's correct. So he's like, man, Job, you're really whiny. And he follows that up with, your kids totally deserve to die.
Yeah.
You know, I'm not sure that this isn't Job's view though, too, because every time that his kids get together for a dinner, Job offers sacrifices afterwards in case they've done something wrong.
He does, that's correct. Every time, every single time, which apparently was quite often, that they would get together and have.
It, it talked about their days. And I think that, uh, at least my recent understanding would be those would be their birthdays.
Yeah, and well, he had a lot of kids.
So, yeah. So they had a lot of parties.
So Bill Dad is annoyed with Job's whining. He thinks his kids deserve whatever they got. What does Bill Dad have to say about God?
Well, it's funny, because he's almost like seeing God is just kind of kicking back, not really worried about. Because like, he says in verse six, surely then he will rouse himself for you. Like, he just doesn't care right now, but if you do these things, then he's gonna like, oh, okay, I guess I'll put some effort for it.
Right. Anything else that sticks out about Bill Dad or his attitude or his behaviors about Job or God?
He's super privileged.
You think he's really privileged? How so?
He acts like one of those people that likes to tell everybody else what's wrong with them and not consider that they might themselves have something wrong and that surely the bad things happening to them are because they're bad people, but I'm a good person, so I'm fine. It's very much that vibe.
Yeah. You guys, go ahead, Matt.
I, I just kind of, the impression that, you know, sort of God is just really, really big. And, you know, we're kind of small, so deal with it in a way.
And, and so let's, speaking about justice, let's turn to that last of the three questions that we want to consider. What does he have to say about justice here? How does justice work in his mind?
More rebuke. Retributive.
Yeah. He likes, and he likes him some retribution.
More prosperity gospel.
Yep. I'm fine, everything's great, I'm doing great. You did something bad, your kids deserved it. He leans a bit more heavily on the retribution end of things, for sure.
It's been decades since I've been in this place, but when someone espouses the prosperity gospel to you, what do you say to those people?
It depends on how rude you want to be, I guess. Right? Or maybe if you're Job, you have massive long-winded dialogue. And we're gonna get to Job's response. I picked up a couple really juicy little bits when Job is kind of snirking back at his friends. We'll, we'll get to that in just.
I think, though, that Job's three friends and Job himself are wealthy guys.
Yes.
They, they were all movers and shakers in whatever community they lived in. Uh, and so they, you know, they've got a different perspective than somebody that's a peasant.
Yes, they will definitely have that. And seeing Job fall so far must have been shocking to some of them, for sure. Now, again, no, no one's mentioned my favorite verses that he has to say, where, again, let me, let me read this again. Behold, even the moon is not bright and the stars are not pure in his eyes. How much less man, who is a maggot, and the son of man, who is a worm? I mean, he just, he kind of thinks that people are definitely not sinless. He definitely thinks that God even finds fault with the stars on some level. So how much more will God find fault in human beings? So he definitely does not think that Job's hands are clean on this. When you're looking at the three friends, if Eliphaz is the most empathetic, this is gonna surprise you maybe, but Bill Dad is kind of in between Eliphaz and Zophar. Bill Dad definitely thinks that Job has done something wrong. He definitely thinks that his kids deserve what they got. But he still holds out some hope that if Job cleans up his act, he can turn out to be okay on some level.
Yeah, five, twenty-one and twenty-two are pretty positive.
Yes.
Like, will yet fill your mouth with laughter.
Yes. He still thinks that there's some hope, but he's not, he isn't, he's, um, if Eliphaz is the optimist, Bill Dad is sort of the de facto realist on some level in between those. Zophar is going to be very pessimistic. Speaking of Zophar, and he is, I'm monitoring our time here. Let's take a look at Zophar. The last of Job's three friends, the guy who's so much of a jerk, he had, well, some scholars think that he actually had a third speech, but when they were reorganizing the book, it got cut off and reorganized into the body of what is now chapter twenty-seven, which was accredited to Job. So we'll, we'll look at this. But Zophar is an interesting guy. This is another, I would call this fun. We're gonna look at all of chapter eleven as a body, and you're gonna get a pretty good sense of what he has to say uh, from just this one chapter. It's twenty verses. Who would be willing to read that for us? Again, it is entertaining. It's long, but fun.
Chapter eleven?
Yes, just all of chapter eleven.
Okay. Then Zophar the namaphite answered, shall a multitude of words go unanswered and a talkative man be acquitted? Shall your boasts silence men? And shall you scoff and none rebuke? For you have said, my teaching is pure and I am innocent in your eyes. But would that God might speak and open his lips against you and show you the secrets of wisdom? For sound wisdom has two sides. Know then that God forgets a part of your iniquity. Can you discover the depths of God? Can you discover the limits of the Almighty? They are high as the heavens. What can you do? Deeper than shell, what can you know? Its measure is longer than the earth and broader than the sea. If he passes by or shuts up or calls an assembly, who can restrain him? For he knows false men and he sees iniqui without investigating. And an idiot will become intelligent when the foal of a wild donkey is born a man. If you would direct your heart right and spread out your hand to him, if iniquity is in your hand, put it far away and do not let wickedness dwell in your tents. Then indeed, you could lift up your face without moral defect and you would be steadfast and not fear. For you would forget your trouble, as waters that have passed by, you would remember it. And your life would be brighter than noonday. Darkness would be like the morning. Then you would trust, because there is hope, and you would look around and rest securely. You would lie down and none would disturb you, and many would entreat your favor. But the eyes of the wicked will fail and there will be no escape for them. And their hope is to breathe their last.
Sounds like a fun guy, right? I love that whole thing, but a stupid man will get understanding when a wild donkey's cult is born a man. So, meaning you'll be intelligent when a donkey gives birth to a person, basically. So he has some really kind of entertaining turns of phrase. Okay, the three questions. What does he have to say about Job?
It's all your fault.
Yeah. It's all on you, dude. It is absolutely all your fault. Your kid's death, the things that have happened to you, it's 100% in your court. You did this. Terrible. Horrible thing to say to somebody else. What else does he think about Job?
Work hard enough, maybe you'll get out of it.
Yeah. If you work hard enough, you might get out of it. Bootstraps, right? You gotta pull yourselves up by your bootstraps, Job. What does he say about God?
But he's unfathomable. I mean, you can't know him.
But, but the God is also just somehow, like, like, God's got the, you know, God's got the answer, you know?
Correct. God's got the answer. You can't know God. Could you know God's concept of justice then?
But God's punishment is just.
Correct. Yeah. That's important to include that mix of the ingredient on, that ingredient in the mix on, because, um, yeah, uh, if, if God is perfect, God is just, God's punishment is just, you are getting punished, Job, because you justly deserve it.
Yep. Well, and actually, God is being merciful, because like the second part of verse six, know then that God exacts of you less than your guilt deserves.
Yeah. If you think this is bad, you haven't seen anything yet. Fun guy. Super great. Fun, wonderful at parties. Last question. And again, we kind of have answered this a little bit, but it's good to kind of circle around and make sure it's clear. Um. What does he think of justice? Go ahead, Bruce.
Retributive.
Yeah. You, you can think of Zophar as retribution plus in some ways. Now, this is, again, like I said, we, we've kind of done a taste test for all three of these friends. Eliphaz definitely talks the most out of the three of them. And if you continue on through the next couple of chapters, right up to Job's final argument, starting around chapter twenty-six, twenty-seven, you can see the three friends cycle through a lot of the same basic ideas. Zophar continues to be a cantankerous jerk. Bill Dad continues to sort of be, oh, well, sort of your own mess, but maybe you can get out of it. And Eliphaz is still really, really overwhelmingly positive, as you sort of look at this. But this gives you sort of a, an appreciation for each of their different strategies in trying to comfort Job. Are any of them being good friends in this dialogue? Not what they've done before, but right now, are they being good friends?
Not really.
They're certainly not accepting Job's protestation that he is innocent.
They are not, they don't believe him. Yeah. Even Eliphaz, who's the, probably the nicest out of the bunch, still doesn't totally buy it. Right? Because they have this idea in their heads that he has to have done something wrong. That was their worldview. That's the way they saw everything. If, if you have bad things happening to you, you must have done something wrong.
Okay, and at least two of the three complained that Job was talking about things he doesn't know about.
Yeah. You've done something wrong, you don't know what you're talking about, you've done something wrong, and you've done something wrong. Sort of the list. Let's take a look, oh, go ahead. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to, Artith, was that you?
Yeah. And there's no evidence that they've ever had any suffering.
That's a great point. We don't get into that with them at all. So we don't really know if they're able to empathize with Job at all on this. Sarah and Bruce.
I just, like, if I'm trying to put this in a modern context and like, is this like a bunch of theologians sitting around that are friends, because they're all theologians, but they believe different things? And they're going all like, um, intellectual about the situation and not like thinking of him as their friend? Like, I'm wondering if there's like a piece of that? Because it's kind of like they're all giving their own theological opinion about what's happening and not maybe thinking about how it really impacts Job.
Yeah, and I think along that line, they're, they're so convinced of their theological understanding of what must be the case, that it overrides even their investigation into whether what Job is saying is true. They simply assume, he's crazy, what the heck are, why do you keep talking this way? Clearly, you've done something wrong to tick God off. That's the only reason this has come to fall on you.
Right.
But is, don't people think like this today, though, a lot?
Yes, they do, loads!
It's like, you know, if, if you're in jail, you did something bad. You know, if you're poor, you're lazy. If you're wealthy, you deserve it.
And.
I, I hear this quite a bit.
And very conveniently, we don't have to care about them then, right?
Right.
And, and we still do it with illness. Like, it drives me crazy. Like, people that are sick got sick because of something they did. Or people that are healthy are healthy because of some like virtue that they have. And it's crazy to me that 2,000 years later, we still do this. Like, it's just, like, people that get in medical debt because of a problem, they must have brought it upon themselves, so they'll have to dig themselves out of it. Like, again, it just blows my mind that we have like not evolved in 2,000 years.
I can't wait to get to the next few things I have planned. I'm so excited right now, you guys. Okay. So, Artith, did you have something you wanted to say? You look like your screen lit up.
Oh, no.
Okay. Let's, we're gonna take a quick snapshot of Job's reaction to his friends. And, and the verses I have picked out here, we're gonna look at Job, chapter thirteen, three through fifteen. This is after all three of the first speeches from his friends. And I just, um, I just like how he kind of handles this. So let's, who would like to read Job thirteen, three through fifteen for us?
I can, but it's in the, it's from the living Bible, is that right?
That's fine. It'll be different, but go for it.
Thirteen, three through fifteen, did you say?
That's correct.
Oh, how I long to speak directly to the Almighty. I want to talk this over with God himself. For you are misunderstanding, misinterpreting the whole thing. You are doctors who don't know what they are doing. Oh, please be quiet. Highest wisdom. I like that line.
That is still good.
Listen to me now, to my reasons for what I think and to my pleadings. Must you go on speaking for God? When he never once has said the things that you are putting in his mouth? Does God want your help if you are going to twist the truth for him? Be careful that he doesn't find out what you are doing. Or do you think you can fool God as well as men? No, you will be in serious trouble with him if you use lies to try to help him out. Doesn't his majesty strike terror in your heart? How can you do this thing? These tremendous statements you have made have, you have made have about as much value as ashes. Your defense of God is as fragile as a clay base. Be silent now and let me alone, that I may speak, and I am willing to face the consequences. Yes, I will take my life in my hand and say what I really think. God may kill me for saying this, in fact, I expect him to. Nevertheless, I'm going to argue my case with him. This at least will be in my favor, that I am not godless. Be rejected instantly from his presence. I guess I went over, but.
That's okay. That's not a bad place to go over. And that verse fifteen is really interesting. I like the way it's translated a little bit in the, the English Standard Version. This is gonna sound familiar to some of you. Though he slay me, I will hope in him. Yet I will argue my ways to his face. What? Job's not done, because I want to give him a fair hearing here. Let's jump over to chapter sixteen, verses one through five, because they're fun. Anybody got that for us?
I can.
Go for it.
Then Job replied, I have heard many things like these. You are miserable comforters, all of you. Will your long-winded speeches never end? What ails you that you keep on arguing? I also could speak like you if you were in my place. I could make fine speeches against you and shake my head at you. But my mouth would encourage you. Comfort from my lips would bring you relief.
That's important. Does Job think he would react differently than his friends? Yeah. And then.
If you were in my shoes, yeah.
Yeah. And one more thing I want to hear from Job here, this is gonna be chapter. Yeah, and one more thing I want to hear from Job here. This is gonna be chapter nineteen, twenty-three through twenty-nine, and I'll take this because, uh, again, I like reading fun stuff, and this is really fun. Oh, that my words were written. Oh, that they were inscribed in a book. Oh, that with an iron pen and lead, they were engraved in the rock forever. For I know that my Redeemer lives. And at the last, he will stand upon the earth. And after my skin has been thus destroyed, yet in my flesh I shall see God, whom I shall see for myself, and my eyes shall behold, and not another. My heart faints within me. If you say how we will pursue him and the root of the matter is found in him, be afraid of the sword. For wrath brings the punishment of the sword, that you may know there is a judgment. Three different passages from Job, but they have some common themes in them, don't they? What are you hearing here? What is Job saying in response to his three friends?
You don't know what you're talking about.
You don't know what you're talking about. Good.
It's a great. There's gonna be consequences for it.
You're gonna get in trouble. Good. What else is he saying?
I still have faith.
I know that my Redeemer lives.
Yeah, this is almost a modern Christian theme.
Oh, so many praise songs pull directly out of Job. Um, like the song that we sing Blessed be the name of the Lord on the road mark with suffering, that there's pain in the offering, blessed be your name. You give and take away. Right, and that's all from Job. This should sound familiar.
So it's interesting. Uh, we didn't talk about, you know, the, the, where were Job? Uh. What, what time span it was written in? Uh.
Somewhere.
It's a prophetic type thing.
So we think, scholars think it's written sometime between the seventh to fourth centuries BCE, but the story itself may actually be older. So I mean, that puts it later than a lot of people would project it out to be on some level.
But, but words like, I know my Redeemer lives may not have been in those earliest stories.
But they probably would have been, they would have shown up sometime in possibly like the fourth century BCE stuff. So I mean, there, there's debate about exactly how old different parts of the Book of Job are. They definitely think for sure that the beginning and end fairy tale is pretty darn old. The stuff in between with the poetry that we're reading now may be younger.
This, this sounds a little bit more like Isaiah.
It does talk about a physical resurrection, which is a later Jewish concept. Now, Job definitely thinks that his, uh, friends have been pretty bad at their job, right? And can I point something out about the three friends? All three of them are trying to solve a problem without really listening to what Job has to say. We're gonna, I know that we're like right at eight o'clock, but if you guys are willing to stick around for maybe just like five to 10 minutes more, what I want to do before we wrap up, I want to take a look at what the New Testament has to say about this stuff. Let's take a quick detour to Matthew, chapter five. This will be relatively quick. Matthew, chapter five, verses forty-three, forty-four, and forty-five. Matthew, chapter five, forty-three to forty-five. Who could read that for us?
I can. You have heard that it was said, you shall love your, your neighbor and hate your enemy. But I say to you, love your enemies and pray for those who persecute you, so that you may be children of your Father in heaven. For he makes his sun rise on the evil and on the good, sends rain on the righteous and on the unrighteous. For if you love those who love you, what reward do you have? Do not even the tax collectors do the same?
You just. That, I was specifically, yeah, so just forty-three through forty-five, that, that's fine.
Okay.
There's an important set of phrases here that Jesus uses that begin to give us a clue about what he thinks about retributive justice. The sun rises on the evil and on the good. The rain falls on the just and on the unjust. Does that sound like retribution? No.
Just, just the way it is.
That's just the way it is. Kindness, both good and evil happen to both good and evil. Let's take a look with this vein of thought at Luke, chapter thirteen. Gonna make you guys jump around with your fingers a bunch tonight, because this is the way that I read the Bible. I jump, I jump around, I'm a jumper. Luke thirteen. Who would like to read verses one through five for us? One through five in Luke thirteen.
I can.
Go ahead.
At that very time, there will be some present who told, there, there were some, sorry, there were some present who told him about the Galileans, whose blood Pilate had mingled with their sacrifices. He asked them, do you think that because these Galileans suffered in this way, they were worse sinners than all other Galileans? No, I tell you, but unless you repent, you will all perish as they did. Were those eighteen who were killed when the Tower of Siloam fell on them? Do you think that they were worse offenders than all the others living in Jerusalem? No, I tell you, but unless you repent, you will all perish just as they did.
And then last, but oh, so definitely not least, let's go to John, chapter nine. One of my all-time favorite passages in the entire Bible.
Chapter what?
John, chapter nine. And let's take a look at this. This is one of my favorite exchanges between Jesus and his disciples, so I'm going to be greedy and I'm going to read it. After he passed by, he saw a man blind from birth. And his disciples asked him, Rabbi, send this man or his parents that he was born blind? Jesus answered, it was not that this man sinned or his parents, but that the works of God might be displayed in him. We must work the works of him who sent me while it is day. Night is coming when no one can work. As long as I am in the world, I am the light of the world. You can see especially in these last two passages, in the Luke passage and in the John passage, Jesus did not care that much about retributive justice. And we don't get like a long discourse on it, but instead, I love what he does here in John, chapter nine, when the disciples are like, well, hey, Rabbi, did this man do something and that's why he's blind? Or did his parents, and that's why he's blind? I mean, whose fault is this? That's retributive thinking. And then bad thing, you must offend. Go ahead, Bruce.
Well, I said, I had to comment, um, those were the only two options they had. It's like, was it him that sinned or his parents? Because it had to have been one or the other.
Right.
And it turns out it was neither.
It was neither. What Jesus does with that passage in particular, he just kind of goes, nope. And he just pushes that whole line of thought aside, and he says, no. This awful thing happened, and you know what? I'm, it's awful, but I'm going to use it to glorify God because I am the light of the world. Jesus sidesteps that entire discussion and says, no, like, who sinned? The, the, the people who had the Tower of Siloam fall on them, are they worse sinners than other people? No. We're all people. It's not that people are punished more because they have done wrong. Bad things just happen. It's just life. Does that make sense? Now, the last two things I want to say. Let's flip over to John sixteen. I want to point something out about the fact, I mean, to a lot of people, the reason they cling so tight and so hard to the idea that good things happen to good people, bad things happen to bad people, if you abandon that view, it seems like the world is full of chaos. That good people suffer even though they did nothing wrong, and that's scary. It's hard. But I love what Jesus says about that, assuming that that's the kind of world that we have. And if you go down in John, chapter sixteen, to verses thirty-two through thirty-three, just two little verses where he addresses this idea. Just listen to this. Behold, the hour is coming, indeed it has come, when you will be scattered, each to his own home, and will leave me alone. Yet I'm not alone. For the Father is with me. I have said these things to you that in me you may have peace. In the world you will have trouble. But take heart, I have overcome the world. And the eve of him being tortured and killed, he still promises peace to his disciples, knowing full well that he, Jesus, a completely good person, was going to have a bunch of really, really bad stuff happen to him that he did not deserve. He understood that's the way the world works. But he was providing something to us in the midst of all that. He was giving us this. It, yes, in the world, there is no good deed that goes unpunished. But guess what? I'm here to shatter that system, and I'm going to make things work in a way that glorifies God. This leads me to the very, 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 very last thing, I promise. Second Corinthians, chapter one. How are we supposed to respond as Christians to this situation? Let me read to you verses three through seven. Blessed be the God and Father of our Lord Jesus Christ, the Father of mercies, and the God of all comfort, who comforts us in all our affliction, so that we may be able to comfort those who are in any affliction with the comfort with which we ourselves have been comforted by God. For as we share abundantly in Christ's sufferings, so through Christ we share abundantly in comfort too. If we are afflicted, it is for your comfort and salvation. And if we are comforted, it is for your comfort, which you experience when you patiently endure the same sufferings that we suffer. Our hope for you is unshaken, for we know that as you share in our sufferings, you will also share in our comfort. Instead of being like Job's three friends, what are we supposed to do? What does this tell us to do instead?
Comfort the afflicted.
Right. Comfort with the comfort you yourself have been given. Right? When we go through awful things, it's not because we're bad people. It's because God is using that, it's because life is life and life sucks. But God takes those opportunities as moments where he can insert goodness and grace into our lives, and if we've received that, we then have the wonderful blessing of sharing that comfort with other people. I think that speaks a much more positive word than either of Job's, the any of Job's three friends. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Good. You know, I know I rushed a little bit at the end, and I sort of started reading verses left and right, and I, but I want to keep on time as much as I possibly can. And there's so much to say here. There's so much great stuff to discuss in this. Because I love talking about suffering. I love talking about hardship because Jesus shared all of this stuff with us, and as Christians, we are a faith that was originally founded with the assumption that the world and life that we live in this world is hard. And there's real comfort to be had in Jesus Christ, and I just get very, very excited about talking about that, because when we suffer, there's that rare moment where we can really begin to share that with Jesus specifically. Now, anything else you guys want to say before we wrap things up tonight? Any other observations you would like to share with us? Anything else anybody wants to say?
We, uh, we read the book, Just Mercy, segues in with this, or most of us read it, and coming up, we have rethinking incarceration, which continues along with this theme that we're talking about here in terms of justice.
That's great. And yeah, important things to think about, because I mean, maybe some of the way that we conceptualize justice with our laws and in our society, maybe that's not really all that fair, or all that just. Any other thoughts before we close?
I like this, um, and Eugene Peterson, at the beginning of the Book of Job, he has a phrase I like. Sufferers attract fixers the way a roadkill attracts vultures. We do. You know, we want to fix the suffering, you know, rather than getting down into it with people.
Yes.
We offer these platitudes. Well, you know, everybody gets sick sometime and everybody has to die of something. I mean, really, you know, stupid things to say to somebody that in grief or suffering.
Right.
And one observation from the reading, um, it strikes me that, uh, on the one hand, uh, it's pretty stark the way his three friends treat him. But on the other, uh, in a way I can almost identify with him, because it's like, you know, I know I like to see justice. I, I don't like things to be unjust or unequal. And yet I realize that i- in a case like that, which one of them are pure enough to be able to stand there and accuse him?
Right.
No one is. We're all guilty of sin. And what's the wage of sin? So if the fact that we're all living is testament to grace.
Right.
Is it not? And, and so it, 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 it's, it's a tough lesson to learn and internalize and actually practice, but a, a white knuckle grip on justice, I think, can, can be a double-edged sword that comes back and haunts you. And, and there has to be a better way, and the only way I can see, of course, is through the love of Christ.
Right. I mean, it's the whole he who is without sin cast the first stone, kind of.
Right.
Right. Good. Now, this concludes our third week. We have two more weeks to go. What we're gonna do next week is we're gonna look at two very weird sections in this book. Job is gonna wrap up his argument in the next few chapters, and then all of a sudden, out of nowhere, this young person starts talking about wisdom. And that's what we're gonna focus on next week, the sort of weird middle section of the book that really, really, really confuses a lot of scholars. So we're gonna play with that a little bit, and then of course, in the fifth week, we're gonna look and see what God has to say about this. So that's the roadmap for the next two meetings, and yeah, that's it for this week. Would anybody like to close us in prayer?
I can.
Go for it.
God, we thank you for this chance to come together this evening and to explore the story of Job. We thank you for Paul's insights, and, and we just pray that you help us think about everything we've learned tonight and, um, just kind of absorb it and, um, think on it, um. And we just pray that you'll help our knowledge of you grow through this study in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Now, if you're looking for a homework assignment, because I feel like if I don't give you guys one, Matt's gonna ask me for one at some point later next week. Read Job twenty-nine through thirty-one, all the way, this is twenty-nine, thirty, and thirty-one. The reason I'm picking those, that is Job's summary. The reason I'm picking those, that is Job's summary argument. He sort of summarizes everything he's been talking about. And we're pretty sure that those chapters should have been attributed to Job. Mostly sure, kind of, at least some of that is attributed to Job. We'll talk about the jumbling of the last few chapters here a little bit next week. All right, everybody. Have a good one. Thanks for coming.